Evening. Good evening and welcome to the February fourteenth Valentine's Day special edition of our governing body. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Cook. Mr. Escobar.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Labor.
Present.
Dr. Rennie.
Present.
Mr. Royball.
Present.
Mr. Seagrey. Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Two members are absent, mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is number four. Proclamation designating February twelfth through nineteenth twenty twenty-two as Entrepreneur Week.
Well, I get the honor to do proclamations every so often, and I'd like to read you the proclamation for Entrepreneurship Week. It says proclamation, whereas more than ninety percent of businesses throughout Wyoming are classified as small businesses. And whereas sixty-three percent of Wyoming's workforce is employed by innovative and entrepreneurial small businesses within the state. And whereas Business Insider has designated Wyoming as one of the best states in the Union for Entrepreneurship. And whereas collaboration with the newly formed Wyoming Innovative Partnership or WIP will develop innovative solutions to support, enhance, and strengthen Wyoming's economy and workforce. And whereas Laramie County Community College, Impact Three Oh Seven, the University Wyoming, and the Wyoming After School Alliance are dedicated to advancing education and training for future entrepreneurs across the state of Wyoming. And whereas in two thousand and six, the United States Congress designated this week so that the people of the United States are reminded of the contributions of entrepreneurs and so that educators are encouraged to reflect on how entrepreneurship education can improve the performance of their students. Now therefore, I Patrick J. Collins, Mayor of the City of Cheyenne, do hereby proclaim February twelfth through the nineteenth twenty twenty-two to be Entrepreneurship Week in Cheyenne, Wyoming. And I encourage Cheyenne citizens to continue to be innovative and entrepreneurial as well support our outstanding Cheyenne entrepreneurs. Thank you. And we do have an entrepreneur, an Innovation Entrepreneurship Council that Dr. Aldridge asked us to do, and we were able to appoint. Would those members please stand up, please? Appreciate you guys coming and serving. Entrepreneurship is a big deal. It's what's going to drive our economy and difference our economy. And so I really appreciate all of your support and your help. Thank you.
Next item is number five consent agenda. All items listed with the designation of C A are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Is there any, any member of the governing body that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White.
I'd like to pull item number twenty-five A.
Concur.
All right, we've had twenty-five A with two concurrences. It is pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
I like the full number seventeen.
All right, so number seventeen has motion and due concurrences. It is also removed. Anyone else? All right, carrying on, I would entertain a motion, please.
Second.
It moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the consent agenda is approved with number seventeen and twenty-five A removed. They'll be considered in their normal place on the agenda.
Next item is seven A, public hearing to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two exists for five twenty-one Southwest Drive located east of Southwest Drive, south of I eighty.
All right. Start with a staff report.
Mr. Ray, I remember the state council. My name is Seth Lloyd. I'm with the planning and development department. And this proposal in review is the public hearing is for the annexation of five twenty-one Southwest Drive. It's property about fifty acres in size to thunder and it's south of I eighty and along Southwest Drive. It is within the future land use map in
Plan Cheyenne, it is considered a mixed-use residential. And that type of development is best served by being within city limits and it being connected to city services. The subject property is bordered on seventy-five percent bordered by the city limits and the only non-city limits that it's bordered by is actually your railroad track. So it's effectively surrounded by the city already. Development in this area has not really occurred within the city limits, so this annexation will have the potential of helping unify that area and expedite future development actions. Develop the services customarily available to the city residents include water, sewer, sanitation, police and fire protections. Police and fire protection will be provided immediately upon annexation. And the water and sewer service will have to come with future development actions. If the property, the property, the house cannot be occupied without the sewer line being connected to it per city regulations. But if this house remains unoccupied, then we can wait until future development actions for the extension of city services. The annexation ordinance and zone corollary zone change ordinance are on today's agenda. And a certified mailing was sent out to the property owner and affected utilities within the area to be annexed on January fourteenth, which is twenty business days prior to this meeting pursuant to state statute. I am also available for any questions regarding this annexation and pertinent regulations within state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Is there anyone on the governing body have any questions for our planner? Mr. Johnson.
On the right side, what's mixed-use employment? What is that? That one's something I'm not familiar with.
So the future land use map is the map on the right, and the mixed-use employment designation is intended for a mix of commercial and industrial type uses. Something along the lines of a industrial park with offices and light manufacturing, that type of, those type of facilities, storage, warehousing. The proper city zones for that type of future land use designation include the mixed-use employment zone, light industrial zone, and the C B zone or community business zone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I hear none. Thank you. We'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here in the public today that would like to talk to this annexation of five twenty-one Southwest Drive? Anyone? All right. The purpose of the public hearing has been met. We'll move on to the next item then.
Next item is number eight ordinance third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from C B, community business to M U B, mixed-use business emphasis for land located northwest of the intersection of Nation Way and Logan Avenue.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the zone change coming before the governing body? All right, carrying on, Dr. Randy.
Mr. Mayor, the Public Service Committee made on this item, and the recommendation is to approve on third and final reading, and I would so move.
Second, seconded by President Royball. Comments or questions from members of the governing body? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Escobar.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Labor.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royball.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
And Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number nine ordinance on second reading, amending chapter thirteen point zero four, public utilities generally, chapter thirteen point zero eight, water services system, chapter thirteen point twelve sewer system, chapter thirteen point sixteen storm steward sewers, and chapter thirteen point twenty wastewater treatment and disposal of title thirteen, public services of the code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, this is like a seventy-five pager that took like fourteen months to get done. So I'm sure somebody has a question, right? Anybody have any comments or questions in the audience? Right, you guys did too good a job writing it. Hearing none, Dr. Randy. Well, actually, I take that back. That would be Mr. White.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Comments from members of the governing body? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number ten ordinance on first reading, amending the Unified Development Code, U D C, of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming to table five dash one zoning district uses in the, in U D C, section five point one point four districts and uses, amending the permissibility of various uses.
We'll assign this one to the Public Services Committee.
Number eleven ordinance on first reading, amending the Unified Development Code, U D C, to create a common landscaping plan and definition of development footprint.
We'll also send this one to Public Services Committee.
Number twelve ordinance on first reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located east of Southwest Drive, south of I eighty.
This one goes to Public Services Committee.
Thirteen ordinance on first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from county M U mixed use to A G agriculture for land located east of Southwest Drive and south of I eighty.
Sounds like Public Services is going to be busy.
Number fourteen ordinance on first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from C B, community business to H I, heavy industrial for land located north of Campstall Road, west of Progress Circle.
Send this also to the Public Services Committee.
Next item is number fifteen ordinance on first reading, creating a new section nine point zero eight point one two zero malicious harassment based on race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, national origin or disability of chapter nine point zero eight offices against public peace and decency of title nine, public peace and welfare of the code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
We'll send this one to the committee of the whole.
Next item is sixteen ordinance on first reading, amending various sections of chapter twelve point two zero cemeteries of title twelve, streets, sidewalks, and public places of the code of the city of Cheyenne pertaining to cemetery fees.
This one will go to the Finance Committee.
Number seventeen resolution authorizing up to fourteen million eight hundred ninety thousand interfund loan from the one percent sales tax capital projects fund to the special purpose option sales tax capital projects fund to facilitate, facilitate the construction of three fire stations, purchase fire trucks, and replace the cemetery irrigation system as approved by the voters on November second, twenty twenty-one, six penny ballot.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this fourteen point eight nine million dollar interfund loan? Sounds like a lot of money. Please come forward. If you, if you identify yourself for the record, please.
Jim Ridgeway, thirty-six fifteen Moore Avenue. That's something that myself as a taxpayer would I guess be approval of just because we're, you know, thinking of people in the future that are going to need the fire protection. And I think it's better to try to take care of it sooner than later rather than wait for that six penny project fund to build up. So I would be in favor for, for the fire stations. I don't know the necessity on the cemetery irrigation. And then can I address a question?
Of course, please.
So if, if it's approved, when would they have plans of those fire stations?
So I think our fire chief is here today. Chief Copper, do you want to answer that question? I mean, I could answer, but he's the expert.
John Copper, fire chief, through you, Mr. Mayor. It was a question, I'm sorry, I was.
So any type of plans showing what they look like, how they accommodate.
Basically, we continue a professional service agreement with Plan One Architects, and we were at thirty-five percent design, so almost pretty much shovel ready. We had a meeting to further facilitate that, and they're going to get to ninety-five percent within the next ninety days, shovel ready by June for the first fire station.
So I just had a couple of questions and probably to the chief for you, the fire station.
Let's, let's talk into that microphone so people in the audience can hear if you would, Mr. Ridgeway.
A couple of questions for the fire chief through you. Do they meet ADA requirements?
Mayor, through you. That's probably, they do need ADA requirements as far as it's all on one level and it has the thirty-six inch clearance, I guess. It's one story.
Mr. Ridgeway, though, I'm not sure we would have a disabled firefighter to be able to meet that. Maybe, maybe someday in the future that might happen, but.
That, that wasn't really the, the direction added. Sometimes fire stations are used more than just firehouses. If you look at Station One, they, at some point in the past, they let the Cheyenne Coin Club meet there. They could be used as a staging area, emergency evacuation site. So that's where it was kind of coming in on those facilities.
Mr. Mayor, through you, the back, public bathrooms within fire station do meet ADA requirements and, and everything else that, the area for the public.
The other question is, how are, how are the, the fire personnel housed? Do they have their own rooms? Is it a, a big open area with racks? Or what, what kind of housing do they have?
Mr. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, through you, each, each member will have their own, their own bedroom.
Then the other question was, is you look towards the future, how would you address? I think for billeting, it would work if you have female firefighters, but does each room have its own bathroom? Is there a communal shower? Or how would you address for female firefighters in the future?
Mr. Mayor, through you, there, there are three separate bathrooms, plus a separate bathroom for the chief officer. So almost every single person has their own bathroom.
And Mr. Ridgeway, we already have two female firefighters, as I understand it today, and they are working through that.
Okay, that, that would be shower facilities, locker room, things of that nature, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. Thank you, chief. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this interloan fund?
Mayor Collins, we have Commissioner Maum on Zoom.
Okay. Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, through you, just quickly wanted to thank you and the rest of the council for looking at this option. The county has been able to utilize it successfully in the past and are, are doing it again. It's a great opportunity to save the taxpayers' money ultimately on these projects and prevent us from having to do value engineering down the line. So I applaud your guys' effort and just once again want to thank yourself, mayor, well, Dr. Rennie, and the other council members who really instrumental in educating the public on the need for all of these projects in our community and, and having this historic success of the six penny so far. So I appreciate you and appreciate you guys considering this as an option.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you. The reason, just so the audience can know that we're really pushing to do this right now, is I'm really afraid of inflation. If we wait a year or two to build these with the way the inflation is going right now, so we, we try to look at the things that are most going to be affected by inflation, which was our fire stations, our fire trucks, that apparatus, if we ordered them right away, we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars over the price increases that would come forward. And then also with our cemetery irrigation system, those are the things we thought were most at risk and why we, we put them on at, at this time. So anyone else in the audience? Last call? All right, Mr. White, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Any comments or questions from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
I believe the gentleman that just spoke is Mr. Ridgeway. I have a question for him.
Ask it through the chair.
Mr. Ridgeway, since you came down to speak to this matter, were you aware it was on the consent agenda? And if I wouldn't have called it off, you wouldn't have had an opportunity to speak. I was not. So I do appreciate it being called off.
You were not aware that it was an issue?
Well, when I looked at this, I saw the C A. I don't for, for, you know, fully understand all the rules, but I think it was important for somebody to be able to speak on it.
And just so people in the audience know, if there's ever an item on this consent agenda that you want to have removed, I have to ask one council person, we'd be happy to remove it for you so we can discuss it. Thank you. Mr. Labor.
Mr. Mayor, I think this highlights a problem I've looked at and understood and discussed for quite some time. Isn't it appropriate that any citizen that comes before us without having to understand the specifics of the C A designation can come before this body and discuss any matter that they care to come and involve us in and, and learn? And I think that this is something that just is something about accountability and being open with what we do. It certainly no harm can come from a change in the policy here that would allow any citizen to come without any approval from anyone to discuss the issues that affect them as Mr. Ridgeway did. And I also have some questions for the city treasurer.
Please ask.
Um. Robin, isn't this the first time we've done this?
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I think we did it a few years ago when we constructed the Debra Mero Park or the Debra Mero facility.
So.
Money from the Good Penny Fund.
Um, obviously, this saves money. And so when this fourteen million eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars is taken out of our reserves, how does that affect the reserves and your desire to have at least a hundred and twenty days in reserve?
Mr. Mayor, through you, this is coming out of the Fifth Penny Fund, so it doesn't affect general fund reserves, which is what I measured, the hundred and twenty days. So this is a totally different fund.
So what, what depletion occurs of the fifth penny funds?
I'm, Mr. Mayor, we have fifty-two million dollars in the Fifth Penny Fund right now, and we don't need near that for our, for the cash flow, all the projects that are planned. So it works out perfectly. We have a lot of extra overages in that, that fund right now due to the high sales tax collections.
So that's overage, not committed fifth penny funds?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Well, thank you. I would note that it's wonderful to be in this position and be able to take this sort of action. It wouldn't happen without some careful efforts to make sure that we were responsible with our funds and had the excellent services of our city treasurer's office to keep us up to date on where we are. So again, I think that this is hardly a routine item. I think this is an important item. And I think it shouldn't have been on the consent agenda, and I shouldn't have had to call it off. It should have been something that we would discuss in our meeting as a matter of course. The people that are watching at home, I believe, are benefiting from some understanding of this process because it was called off the consent agenda. And I think we really need to take a look at that and determine if what we're doing really is the most public and responsible way. And one more time, it's my opinion that any citizen of Cheyenne, without any approval or communication with any council member, should be able to come to a meeting and discuss an item that affects them without any such action as we had to take tonight. Because obviously, there was a reason that Mr. Ridgeway came, and I think that this discussion has been beneficial to all concerned, and certainly Mr. Maum as well had an opportunity to comment. He wouldn't have had otherwise. So, thank you.
And just for the audiences, you know, when we're talking about spending fifth penny overage money on six penny projects, we're not stealing those dollars, we're borrowing the dollars, we're going to pay them back with interest so that the fifth penny tax fund will be whole as the voters wanted to. We're just borrowing from ourselves, and the money that's sitting in interest, the money that's sitting in the bank right now, we're, the money, the interest that we would get for that, we're paying that back. So the fifth penny sales tax will be whole throughout this whole process. All right, any other comments from members of the governing body?
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you, I just want to say that I really want to applaud, you know, I, I serve on lots of boards and lots of committees and have lots of experience doing this, but I don't think I've ever been on a councilor board that had a treasurer who was astute as what you are, Treasurer Lockman. And I think that helping us to maximize and maintain our resources is huge. And so really appreciate the work that you and your team do to make sure that we are maximizing our city dollars and our tax dollars, and we're being good stewards of that, and that we're able to maintain our services as well as our, what we are able to provide to our community because of your due diligence. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You know, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the interloan fund is approved.
Next item is number twenty-five A, grant of right-of-way easements on this city-owned property for exhibit A between the city of Cheyenne and Cheyenne Light Fuel and Power Company for a hundred and fifty foot wide right-of-way and easement for construction and maintenance of overhead power facilities.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Collins, sorry.
I'm sorry.
We just had someone raise their hand.
Wonderful.
Mr. Jim Watson is on Zoom. Let me give him the opportunity to talk here.
Mr. Watson, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just thanks for the opportunity to talk here. I'm just here on standby if you have any questions.
We appreciate you. And Jim, could you introduce yourself and what you do for the record, please?
Sorry, Jim Watson worked for Black Hills Energy, now I'm shining light, light fuel and power.
Okay, thank you very much. If we have any questions, stand by, okay?
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience? Charles, did you want to speak? Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
Mayor, members of council, Charles, Charles Bloom, planning and development director, for the record. There's been some discussion that has occurred recently regarding how we got to the ten dollars as being the price for easements. We would recommend that this idea be postponed so we can provide some additional information at the next finance meeting so we can determine where that ten dollars originated. And then really see if there's a additional value in that land being encumbered, and also looking at how we can have the ability to look at this in the future so we're not locked into place. So Sam is recommending at this time that we postpone this to the next meeting, which will give us some time at finance to discuss this in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Anyone else in the audience? Anybody have a question for our planning director? Thank you, Charles. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by President Royball.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Having Having heard the comments from Mr. Bloom, I would move to postpone this item.
Second.
So we're going to postpone for two weeks, seconded by Dr. Aldridge, we'll go back out to the audience, is there anyone like to speak to the postponement for two weeks? Michael, are we good?
Mayor, yes, I believe so, unless Mr. Watson has anything to add.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, Jim Watson again, Black Hills Energy.
Yes, sir.
If you have a moment, just to speak to the ten dollars and other valuable consideration. That ten dollars is just a placeholder, meaning that you have to put some compensation in the easement. Just to, it doesn't actually mean the dollar amount, for example, private landowners right around there. We're paying fifteen dollars a linear foot. That, that compensation, be happy to address as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, I think our contract doesn't say ten dollars and other valuable, it just says ten dollars. And so I think we've got to go back and spend a little time and understand that, and, and maybe. Maybe we can do that.
Fair enough.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience? How about from the governing body? All right, hearing none, the motion is to postpone, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, we are going to postpone this item. Consider to get it our next meeting.
Next item is number twenty-five C, professional services agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Thomas Zott. For city prosecutor, legal counsel services.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this professional services contract? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mister, Mister Mayor, the, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda. At the February seventh, twenty-twenty-two Finance Committee meeting, therefore provisions of Title II of City Code have been met. Mister Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars annually.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Johnson, comments for members of the governing body? Dr. Randy.
My assumption, since this was brought up, rather than being referred, since this was brought up under Finance Committee. Kind of on a fast track was that apparently we really need somebody in that position, is that a correct assumption?
Uh, Dr. Randy, we, he is our city prosecutor and our prosecutor left to go work for the public defender, so yeah, we needed him right away. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you to our city attorney. In my understanding is that this will be, he'll be half-time or part-time as needed.
Stephanie Bossler, Cheyenne City Attorney, through you, Mister Mayor, to Councilman Aldridge, that is the intent. Currently, though, he's working full-time, our hope is that he can pare that down to part-time. So he can operate a solo practice.
As I understand, he had a hundred and forty arrangements the other day in one morning.
That's correct, Mister Mayor, he did, it's, it's busy at the municipal court, I'm lucky to have him.
The court is busy, and that's why this, this position was so important, because she was being city attorney and prosecutor at the same time, and it was a little more than we can handle.
Tough.
Yeah, any other comments or questions from the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the professional service agreement is approved.
Next item is number twenty-six A, contract modification number one, the contract number sixty-nine fifty-seven between the City of Cheyenne. And Wyoming Cattle Company LLC, adding the Mariah pasture and extending the term of the Belhorn Ranch grazing lease agreement. Through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
All right, is there anyone in the audience want to speak to grazing? I did a lot of that yesterday. All right, hearing the, Mr. White.
Mister Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee was to approve in an amount not to exceed. One hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. However, it has been brought to my attention that due to the nature of the contract. The amount of revenue may fluctuate annually depending on the condition of the grass and the amount of grazing. Therefore, I would move to approve.
Been seconded by President Royball, comments or questions for members of the governing body?
Mister Mayor.
Mister Labor.
I see in the notes of the. Committee meeting that the Mariah property was previously identified as overgrazed by the Conservation District. I was curious how it came to be, and I'm of course glad to utilize the expertise of the Conservation District. But. Are they going to continue to monitor this? And is the discussion that we had earlier about the amount of grass and how much. Can be consumed by the cattle before we're going to need to protect the resource?
Mister LeBoy.
Craig LeBoy, Public Works Department, yes, the Meyer pasture was not overgrazed by us. This is pasture that was purchased and it was overgrazed when they owned it. We have since let it recover, and the Conservation District has recommended that we could graze it, and they will monitor. All grasslands out there for us that continue to do that and make recommendations as we request and as they. When they notice there's something going on, they'll, they like to tell us.
Thank you, Mister LeBoy, just, it's our ranch and it's our land, so ultimately we get to make that decision, is that correct? It's in the nature conservancy, or is it?
Through you, Mayor, I believe that is true. They are better, have a better understanding of what's going on there, so we do lean on their recommendations.
Understood, thank you, sir. All right, any other questions or comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the contract modification number one to contract sixty-nine fifty-seven is approved.
Next item is number twenty-eight A, voucher report?
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the vouchers? I agree with that, how about from the members of the governing body? All right, none, next item, please.
Twenty-eight B, announcement that due to the President's Day holiday on Monday, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Regularly scheduled city council committee meetings will instead be held as follows. Finance Committee will be held at noon on Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. And Public Services Committee will meet at noon on Wednesday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. At the Kiwanis Community House at forty-six oh-three Lyons Park Drive, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting. Announcement of a committee of the whole meeting to be held Wednesday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. At six P M at Story Gym, Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom, twenty-eight eleven House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting, announcement of a public hearing to be held February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. At six P M at Story Gym, Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom, twenty-eight eleven House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting for renewal applications for existing city liquor licenses. Retail restaurant, limited retail, resort, bar and grill licenses, microbrewery, satellite distillery. Special malt beverage and winery permits filed with the city clerk's office. Announcement of a public hearing to be held February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two at six P M at Story Gym, Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom. Twenty-eight eleven House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting. For a transfer of ownership of a retail license application filed with the city clerk's office for Dillon Companies LLC. A Kansas Limited Liability Company, doing business as King Supers, thirty-seven oh-two Delrange Boulevard, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Licensed currently held by Avanti Inc., doing businesses Delrange Liquor, thirty-eight oh-six Delrange Boulevard, number four, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two at six P M at Story Gym, Laramie County Schools District Number One Boardroom. Twenty-eight eleven House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting to hear. Public comment regarding the city's intent to enter into a contract with Community Shelter. To grant a subaward from coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. To be used to increase available emergency housing and temporary shelter for the Cheyennes homeless population, other business?
Do we have another item that we want to read in another business?
Yes, Mayor, we do, contract between the City of Cheyenne and Community Shelter. Granting a subaward to be used to increase available emergency housing and temporary shelter to support Cheyennes homeless population. Corona state and loc- coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
We'll send that one to the finance committee, please. All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak under other business tonight? Mr. Ridgeway. The purpose of your visit.
Uh, Jim Ridgeway, thirty-six fifteen Moore Avenue, Cheyenne. Mister Mayor, just got a few things here, not gonna hold a bunch of people up here. So just from the background, residential sewer fees are established by meter readings from January, February and March. Okay, my latest bill from the Florida Public Utilities. Was a meeting of, it went for thirty-five days, thirty-five calendar days, and I thought that was rather excessive. When I called the water department to find out, they had said that my address was in zone seventeen. And it could have been because of either holidays for staffing. So the reason I'm bringing this up is that because of that thirty-five day reading. My normal reading in January, February, March is either two or three thousand a month, it pushed it up to four thousand. And I was trying to find out, I don't know if that was their answer, because it was a staffing issue. Or if it's a, I don't know. The more that they can charge you, it's going to affect your, I guess, the bill you pay throughout the year. So this next reading, if it's thirty-five days, it's going to push it up again, if it goes to March, it's going to go push it up again.
Mister Ridgeway, could you give me that address again, please?
Thirty-six fifteen Moore, M O O R E Avenue.
So, so what I know is you're right, we establish your sewer rates based on water usage. In the winter time, because in the summer, we do so much watering of grass and stuff that would skew the numbers. So they do use a sample size in the winter time to figure out how much you're going to use domestically, and then that's how they amortize. Or figure your sewer rate over the winter time, so I'll look into that, sir.
Okay, then the, the question I have, if it's on the city, if it was a staffing issue from the city, that shouldn't be not just my reading. But everybody in that zone seventeen. And the question I had, if, if they're going to do that, February is probably a little bit late. But for March, can they do an adjustment and read it for twenty-five days? And that would mean everybody in that zone seventeen to equal it out.
Understood.
And then, can I approach?
Sure.
Gonna pass out a couple of things here. That's one can go left or right. So this is dealing, I guess, early in the week, I sent some photos to. The mayor and. The person that's in charge of the Greenway or Walks, and this was regarding Lyons Park walking paths. Okay, we still have issues up there, we're standing water, there's three locations, I only have two here. It's, it's an issue with drainage. So they can either, I guess, install a covert or some type of drain to drain the excess water off. Or raise the concrete. So I'm just bringing that to the attention there, I'm recently to walking up there, and I explained that people have to navigate around this. They're going out on the grass to get back onto the, the walking path. The first photos that I, I sent to you, that, that water was probably twenty-five feet long. And then as wide as the path, but they did go up and they did try to remedy as best they could.
As soon as you gave us the message, we got to staff and they were right out there that afternoon to do the best they could, yes, sir.
All right, so I just wanted to see what they could do to put that on a list for some type of improvement or to have an engineer look at it. To, I guess, remedy the situation.
Understood.
Okay. The other note, I was up in the park today, they did fix the, the light that was knocked down. And then I have a question, I know that you would, the city has given a license to the people that have those scooters.
Yep.
The question I have is, do they, are they allowed just to leave them when they expire, or does anybody pick them up? Because I've included photos of them there, where they're just left laying on the ground.
So as I understand it, sir, they, when they're done with them, they can just leave them where they are, and then they have a crew that comes around and picks them up. Services them, charges them, and then puts them in positions that they think would be good for customers, as I understand that, the, the process.
Okay, do you, do you recall what the contract is when they pick them up again or not? Or is this something they just weekly, monthly?
No, it's, it's, Mister Mayor, I believe the language in the ordinance that we crafted last year. And Mister Johnson might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was. Two to three hour timeframe from the time they are contacted.
Actually, I think the question is, is, you know, how often do they pick them up wherever they leave them when they're, when they're done using them, not for repairs?
Okay.
So, was that, am I correct in your question?
You're, you're correct.
Yeah, so I guess, Stephanie, I don't know, do you know the answer? I, I, I think if I remember correctly, the, they can, they'll drop them off, and then the scooter company picks them up every so often. Recharges the batteries, make sure they're safe, and then they, they position them someplace, and they may just leave them where they are, put them back in those same areas. I don't honestly know their, their business practice.
And they're not allowed to block the sidewalks or the walking path.
Um, I believe they can leave them on there, but I don't believe that they can block the sidewalk or pass, I don't know the answers are.
All right, that was just a question, it's, I guess it's a good service, but it's kind of annoyance when, when they're left there for two to three days. And nobody picks them up.
Sorry, I, I've had this question several times over the last, especially this week. In regards to the ones that were in the photos, so on the city website, when you do a search and type in Bird, which is the name of the scooter company. What it has is, it says community mode, community mode allows anyone with a Bird account to report and provide feedback on vehicle-related issues. Such as poorly parked or damaged vehicles in their area. When a report is submitted, a member of the Bird team is assigned to correct the issue, anyone can access community mode by tapping the yield sign on the bottom of the Bird map. If a resident has questions or concerns about the e-scooters company, they can be directly reached at one eight six six two zero five two four four two. Or hello at bird.co, more information about the company can be found on their website, which is W W W dot bird.co. And on their blog, W W W dot bird.co backslash blog. What, from what I've experienced so far, because I'm, really, I just copy and paste this when I get tagged and posted in regards to this. Is, everybody that's actually either reached out through the email or through the phone number has actually had success. That the Bird company comes directly out there to remove them, you know, off the sidewalk. I had some in Saddle Ridge last summer, and then the ones in Lands Park over this last week that they've had. Usually what happens at the city level is if, if I get a report that they haven't been picked up after the call. Or the email's been sent to the Bird company, then I reach out usually to compliance to see if compliance can go and pick those scooters up. What happened in Saddle Ridge over the summertime is the solar power cell, that solar power cells actually died. So it turned off the GPS, and so they actually did not know that those scooters were actually at the location they were at. Because the GPS had died when the solar powered battery had expired. And so what we have had done is compliance will typically go and pick them up, hold them in a, a city facility. And then, then Bird will usually send their truck over or their scooters, whatever they use to haul them, because I've seen them done both ways. That they come and actually pick them up from the city and then get them back to fully charged and then relocated. And then if Eric has anything else to add in regards to his contact, from my understanding, he just reaches out to Bird directly, just like the. The voting member would, just to take care of the problem, and Bird, you know, comes to the location where they know their scooters are at.
And, and what you were saying is if I, if I think it's a nuisance, I require to reach out to them, to tell them to recover their device?
Right, that was what was done in the press release when we did this back in July of last year, when the ordinance was, was ran through council. Is that what they did is Bird was on the call, said that they were going to be good stewards of their, of their scooters. So as far as a nuisance, I mean, that depends on the broadness of the term, you know, because usually what I do. If I see them lying, you know, on their slides, and I just pick them up, put the kicks down and try to move out of pedestrians way, that's just what I do. Other people usually just tag me in posts and say, Richard, what goes on with this? And then that's where I actually just copy and paste the press release that we have got, but there's multiple avenues that we can take. Usually you don't have to contact the city councilman to have a scooter removed, but you know, you can usually call the company directly. Or, you know, there's, I believe on the website as well, you may have to go into the et cetera's part on reporting a concern. In regards to this, that it's like a nuisance, that if you believe the scooters are there, you can go on our, either the Cheyenne app or on the website. To report a concern, and I believe it goes under the nuisance and code enforcement concerns is what you do. And then you can put in the location of where the scooters are, if you have not had any success dealing with. And then, um, you can put in the location of where the scooters are if you have not had any success dealing with the company. Or if you don't have that access, like the eight hundred number that I gave or the email address that you can go directly on our app or our website, um, to turn those in. It actually does look like it's, um, it would be under the violation of obstruction of alley street or sidewalk. Um, technically it's under city code twelve zero four one zero. I know that the scooter's parent located in directly in that city code. But if I was to actually just go, just off a, you know, an educated guess, that would be where I'd put my checkmark. And then put the address and location of the violation. And then it actually has a description of your concern. And like how you submitted photos here to us, you can do that as well. You can put the description of your concern. And for your example, that there were scooters that were left on their side, that didn't appear to have any power cells working at the time. And then you can upload your photos as well so that it goes directly to the compliance officer if you do it through an electronic means.
Mister Ridgeway, maybe what I'll do is have our public information officer, uh, do another, uh, a press release with all the information so that you and anyone in the public would be able to, to, uh, understand exactly how to, um, have a bird picked up if it's in, in a bad spot.
Okay, but I just, I think it's kind of a, a burden to put it on the citizen. I would think that either the company or the council would readdress with the company about a timeframe to pick them up. If that's, if that's what you want to have is just line up in Lyons Park, I don't know other areas too, just scooters laying on their side or in random areas. That's fine, but it seems to me that I shouldn't have to go out to various websites or phone calls to, to contact them.
Mister Ridgeway, I think, uh, our compliance director is right behind you. If you'll step aside, he'll, he'll try to do his best to answer that for you.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and Council, Eric Fountain Director of Compliance. We have a contract with Bird and they've given us an agreement that they will go out and, and, uh, service our scooters. We're coming up on the first year of having this opportunity here in the community. We'll get a dashboard review. We'll have some data to kind of find out how long the scooters lay there, what kind of sees the anticipation of the problem going forward. We'll be happy to take a look at that as we renegotiate that contract with them, but not knowing about it. And again, not looking to the constituent to take care of the situation. I'll be happy to reach out to Bird tomorrow and take care of that. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. The other thing is going back to, uh, the walking paths in Lyons Park. Um, I've also called about drifting snow. I'm trying to, to understand park maintenance on when they go out, who's there, if they make a, a sweep in the morning, if they go out in the afternoon. As I don't know if they're staffing issues or what. It seems to me that, that somebody from Lyons Park would have seen that water in the hazard that it could have caused.
We have our, we have our, our deputy director of our park system here. So let's see if we can get that answer for you, sir. Mister Sanchez.
Mister Mayor, Jason Sanchez, Community Rec and Events. Um, our general practice is, uh, once we get one inch of snow on the ground, our crew reports, uh, to start doing snow removal. If it's snowing through the evening, we start at about four o'clock in the morning. Uh, inevitably, the last few storms, the, the snow's been a little powdery. So we'll move it, the wind will pick up throughout the day. It'll cause drifting. We shuffle back out. We try to move it again. Uh, we try to just stay on top of it as, as, as the need arises. Uh, this last storm, uh, over February, I think it was third, fourth, uh, we had a few inches of snow. We moved it. We moved it again and then it started to melt and those are the puddles you're seeing. Uh, we went back out this last week, tried to move any of the water that we could, uh, tried to spread out some of the drifts if we could. Uh, but inevitably we have a few inches of snow off to the side and it's going to melt. Uh, we could look at, uh, possible drainage solutions with our engineering department. But, you know, realistically, the cost in doing something like that, uh, I don't know that we have that in our budget. But we'll continue to try to, to keep the snow off of the paths and keep the water when it, when it melts to stop from pooling.
Thank you, Mister Sanchez.
Okay, just in, in getting back that with addressing, uh, the cost of the budget. It, it's kind of a safety issue. If it's an elderly crowd that walks up at Lyons Park and you're asking them to divert off the path, walk around on the grass and snow because you can't fix a drainage issue. I think that the city does have the money to address that. So I don't know if you agree or disagree.
Anything else, Mister Ridgeway?
I do. Uh, going back to, uh, talking about funding for the fire stations, uh, January eighteenth, city treasurer put out a memorandum to the city council. And what she said was, uh, in the, in the, I'm going to read verbatim. The forty-two point five million, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty-two fifth penny ballot, which is collected over a four-year period, was fully collected only thirty-one months. Hey, that leaves seventeen months of sales collections through December twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to be considered overages. So you're looking at approximately, what she said, could be nearly thirty million dollars in overages.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I think when you're talking about fixing a small thing, you can't say that you don't have the funds.
Sir, you made, you've made your point. I understand. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak under other business? Anyone else? How about from the governing body? Doctor Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. I would just wanted to remind everyone that we will have the, uh, monthly council and coffee at Dos Bog on Saturday morning. Uh, located at the corner of College and Pershing from nine to eleven. So we would encourage our residents and our citizens to come out and visit with us. Uh, grab a cup of coffee as they're running their Saturday morning errands and, uh, visit with us about what's, what they're thinking about and the concerns that they have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mister Johnson.
Actually, I want to, uh, commend my colleagues, um, for, we all showed up for the Boys and Girls Club Chili Cookoff. I think it's the only time our governing body literally had almost nine members of the city council present to, um, not only for Pete's chili, for Ken's chili, uh, and for Brian's wife's chili. Sorry, Brian. And so, uh, but it was just very nice. I think it's, it was just one of those, uh, things that by seeing us all actually show camaraderie that we actually cared enough about the community we live in to actually not only make chili, participate in it, but just to be available for, you know, any questions, concerns from, you know, uh, constituency or just saying, hey, thanks for actually being a team and, you know, showing that you actually, uh, do care. So I really want to thank my colleagues. We really did, uh, show up for them and like nine of us, you know, which was crazy. I've never attended an event with that many of us in attendance to actually support something in our community. So thank you guys for all you did.
The only bad part about that was, yeah, Commissioner Malman. Yeah, I just, I just, I was just going to say before he said anything, there was a fundraising challenge and the commissioners did win, but next year we'll, we'll be prepared and I don't think that will happen.
Actually, if, if, if I wanted, if I was to go back in hindsight, it was twenty twenty, I would have challenged Gunner and me to actually, um, raise the funds, uh, for, uh, the basically the community challenge or what it's called, like the public vote or whatever it was. And I would have challenged Gunner, yeah, people's choice. How to challenge Gunner and said, the third place team was actually who deserved it because it was the Triumph High School culinary team. And so I would have really challenged Gunner and I to throw the contest and actually both of us back that team. Cause those guys, you know, those kids came up from the culinary club and took third place against, obviously, government rivalries, you know, which of course we probably have a way broader scope of, you know, influence than these kids. But I really do think that the third place team was really the first place team. So there you go, Gunner.
I did, what, Mayor Collins, I did want to note that we did receive a thank you note from the Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, they did mention that, uh, the large amount of money raised, I think between the city, uh, government and city council and the county commissioners, there, almost twenty thousand dollars was raised. So kudos to all the council members and to the commissioners.
Job well done. Anyone else in the governing body? So guys, I just want to let you know, um, we, uh, need to, to go into executive session tonight. Uh, we're getting ready to start our negotiations with the fire union. And so we need to sit down and, and talk a little bit about, uh, about how that goes. And this is one of the areas that, uh, the, uh, uh, the legislature allows us to go into executive session, which is to talk about labor issues. And so, uh, would appreciate a motion to, uh, go into executive session. So everyone here knows, we'll turn off all our recording devices and we'll adjourn into another room. And when we come back, all we'll do is adjourn. There will be no other business of the governing body tonight.
Mister Mayor, pursuant to Wyoming State Statutes, section sixteen dash four, dash four oh five subsections A and X. I move that the governing body meet in executive session to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mister Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so our, our decision will be to go into executive session. Thank you all for coming tonight. Uh, we appreciate it. And at this time, we'll turn off all of our recording devices and, uh, I do think we need the fire chief and our city attorney and our treasurer uh, to join us, um, uh, chief of staff in our executive session, please.